Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Koloji. On your direction, I'll go ahead and call the roll to see if we have a quorum.
Please take the roll.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson? Mr. Harrison? Mr. Michelle?
President.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Wilkins? Ms. McBride? Mr. Koloji, at this time, we do not have a quorum.
Right, well, as you know, under our ordinance, we're required to wait thirty minutes and retake the roll to determine if there is a quorum. So, at this point, I would say at about five twenty-nine, we get back on and you take the roll again, and we'll see where we are.
Sounds good. All right, sir.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Koloji, I'm just, Mr. Koloji, I'm just add to that. I mean, we, we have, we don't have a quorum. I think we have some communication that we're not going to get a quorum. So, is it really necessary for us to stay here for thirty minutes?
Well, my concern is that we, we addressed this identical thing the last time. My concern is that the ordinance requires it. And if we just unilaterally cut it short, I wouldn't want anybody saying, but wait a minute, you know, at, you know, five fifteen, I was able to be there, five twenty, I was able to be there. So, unfortunately, I think we're obligated to wait the period.
Um, all right.
I'm not any happier about it than you are, believe me. It's Friday evening, and it's a beautiful night, but I just don't want to run into any legal issues about it.
All right, well, everyone have a great weekend.
All right, thank you.
Well, uh, George is kind of like, uh...
Garcia?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes.
Are you on, Mr. Garcia?
I am.
Mr. Garcia, it's Councilman Michelle.
Hey, Councilman, how are you, sir?
I, apparently, they're on another link. Everybody's on another link. Uh, if you could put that, if you could put the link out again for everybody.
There was, um, Joe and, uh, March, and, uh, uh, one more person went on the other line, but they are trying to connect to this one.
Whatever.
Maria? Yes.
What, what other link was there?
Uh, it's, it's the, the regular, uh, there was another link of a, um, Teams link.
Teams link?
Yes.
Shouldn't have been a Teams link.
Yeah, there is a Teams link out there.
Yeah, yes, there was. Uh, in the email that was sent most recently, there was a Teams link on that also.
Oh, I wonder why that might have been. Okay. Um, hold on one second.
Maybe we could try another roll call.
Sure. I have no problem with that. Uh, are those individuals here now? I'm, I'm looking myself, trying to find them. Hang on.
Hi, Joe. Mr. Garcia, we can see your email.
Yeah, I'm trying to, uh, I was trying to look at the, uh, last sent email to locate where that Teams link came from.
Yeah, it was only four people on the other link, and I think all of us transitioned to this one.
Okay.
It must be an IT issue at the last special meeting. It did the same thing. When you clicked to join online, it took you to Teams. Because Wally had called me and said, Paul, you're in the wrong meeting.
Oh, okay. But nonetheless, it is a Zoom link that's out, that was put out, correct?
Yes, it's a Zoom link, but for some reason, when you click join online, it seems to take you to Teams.
Oh, okay, that I'm not sure how to fix. Okay. In any event, I'll, I'll give them the roll call if we have everybody here.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Clark? Yeah, I just heard from, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson. She said that she and Councilman Harrison are on another link. And I told her you were aware that they're out there and that you're trying to put it together from a technical standpoint.
Yeah, I just found out from Mr. Harris. I'm trying to, uh, he says that apparently it is a Zoom link, but for some odd reason, when you click on it, it sends you to Teams, and I don't know how to correct that. Um, it seems the majority of individuals were able to get on successfully. Um, are they with us yet? I'm looking myself, I'm not sure.
Maybe they need to be contacted by telephone and told to call in on the other link or log in on the other link. I don't know, I'll leave that up to you.
All right, let me go ahead and, uh, let me go ahead and give that a shot. Hold on one, excuse me.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but it, the website and all is on the Trenton's website. That's where I got mine.
Mrs. Edward Koloji, thank you for that information. Uh, make sure the clerk, uh, is aware of that.
Mr. Garcia or Mr. Koloji, if I may? Um, with sharing these, uh, meeting links, whoever may be the presenter, they might have on their participants tab an option to share this meeting, and that'll provide a link that they can immediately email to the, uh, anyone, the council persons, as well as anyone that want to get on. Uh, that might circumnavigate the Teams opening issue. Um, because when I initially joined the, the meeting through the calendar event, that opened the Teams thing, because that's through Microsoft. But when I found in the invitation details, the Zoom Gov link, that opened up Zoom immediately. So, it might be something as simple as that.
I'm sorry, who is this? I couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
Forgive me, sir, I'm Mike Nellie, and I'm from Housing and Economic Development. I do the Team, I do, the Team stuff.
I immensely appreciate your information, but it's Latin to me. I'm the most non-technical guy in the room. I still use fountain pens. So, as soon as the clerk gets back on, this is his department, and I'm going to leave it to him so I don't do anything that, you know, that could compromise, uh, the technical aspects of this meeting. I wouldn't even try, but thank you.
Copy that, sir, of course.
Soon as he gets back on. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcia? Hello? Mr. Garcia?
Yes, yes, Councilman.
Uh, Mr. Harris is trying to reach you. Mi- Mr. Harris is trying to reach you with several other members, trying to get the link, uh...
I'm on the phone with Ms. Caldwell-Wilson at the moment. I'll, um, I will, uh, try and resend this link.
Yeah, apparently, there's a mix-up somewhere.
All right.
I just sent both of them an invite to their cell phones.
Okay, great. Okay, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, you should have an invite to your cellphone now. Uh, Ms. Richardson just forwarded the meeting to you and Ms., and Mr. Harrison as well.
Oh, oh, she did?
Yes.
Where did she send the invite?
Uh, I believe, I'm, I imagine it went to your email. Was it to your email, or was it via text, Ms. Richardson?
I sent it via text.
She sent it via text to you.
Oh, okay, then I'll end up with my turn.
Okay. You're welcome, thank you. All right, bye-bye. Thank you, Ms. Richardson, I appreciate that. I see Mr. Harrison's here. I'm going to wait for Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, I'll take another roll. Yeah, sorry about that, folks, I'm not exactly which, what, uh, what happens with the, uh, where Zoom goes to the themes. Okay, I see Ms. Caldwell-Wilson appears to be here. I'm going to go ahead and take another roll. Uh, roll call, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison, I see, can you unmute yourself? Can you, uh, is that you? I'm going to ask you now. Moving along, Mr. Michelle, present?
Present, he still has trouble, Mr. Harris.
Okay, I see his name here. I'm asking him to unmute, but I'm not sure whether... Uh-uh, hold on. Working with him here. Okay, uh, I'll go through the roll, I'll go through the roll again. Mr. Harrison, are you, wait, Mr. Harrison, can you hear me? I see the name here, maybe that's not him. Hang on. Be with you one, one moment, folks. Just contacting Mr. Harrison now. Hey, Mr. Harrison? Um, I understand, I understand for some reason the Zoom got into a Teams link. I see you listed here, is this you with the JH, Mr. Harrison? You, I sent it actually more than one time today. Uh, Ms., Ms. Richardson, uh, forwarded it to your phone today via text. If you use that link, you should be able to get in via, via your, via your phone, uh, pretty easily. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson was able to just now. Okay, sounds good, yep. Okay, he's going to try again, and...
Can you hear me?
You sure can.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to go through this, uh, this roll call one more time. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Michelle?
President.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Wilkins? And Ms. McBride? Okay. Mr. Koloji, I do not have a quorum at this time.
Well, we will, I guess the thirty minutes, uh, since this was the first true, uh, roll call, I guess the thirty minutes should start commencing now, and at five forty-five or thereabouts, we should take the other roll call based upon the thirty-minute rule in our ordinance. And if we have an ord, if we have a quorum then, then we proceed, and if we don't, we do not.
The thirty minutes doesn't apply to the initial roll call?
Well, they, we didn't get through to an initial roll call, did we? Was this the first, the roll call on the record?
I mean, we took, we took the other one. I did, well, either one would be on the record, but we took the initial one. If, I mean, if folks aren't here, um, I've noted that, I, I've noted that they're here now, um...
Okay, no, no, I, I see what you're saying. Um, I, obviously, it was clear that certain of the individuals may have had a technical issue that although they were here or they weren't here. But the bottom line is, you're right, we still don't have a quorum, regardless of what the initial...
Right.
Uh, the initial roll call said. So, okay, at five thirty, we would do a second one to see if, if that's changed, and then we'll take it from there.
Understood.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes, Councilman.
Have you, uh, announced, because, like I said, I wasn't able to get on. Did you announce what this meeting's about?
No, I simply took roll to make sure that we could hold the meeting.
Well, you should have...
The meeting has been, the meeting's been properly noticed prior, prior to this point.
Right.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right, shouldn't you be announcing what we're, we're meeting here for?
No, at this point, the meeting has been noticed already properly. So, if tho, those who are on this meeting have been notified of that meeting per OMA, so there's nothing for me to, there's no, nothing more for me to say or do until there is actually a roll, a roll, a successful wo, roll call for quorum.
I ask you with your knowledge...
You can announce what a meeting is about, you don't have a meeting.
Right.
So, so if this meeting was about the raises, we could have a meeting then?
Why would that be?
Uh, because it seemed like the, seems to be the only meetings that my colleagues are going to show up to. I mean, it's, it's embarrassing. This is embarrassing, we should be doing the city's business, but it, again, here we go again, that we're not showing up. For what reason? You know? Can we, we should have another, should we have another special meeting next week then? Because these issues still need to be addressed. I guess we're never going to address them? Is that what we're going to do? Just keep, like, uh, pushing it down the road? This is embarrassing.
Tell you what I can do, Mr. Harrison, I can post the agenda back to the screen, have that big.
What was that, Mr. Garcia, I did not hear you, sorry.
Oh, no worries. I said, I asked you, I said, uh, what I, originally, par, uh, prior to, um, trying to get some folks in due to their technical difficulty, I was sharing my screen with the, with the agenda posted. That would, uh, that would be, that would be informative to the public. Have that big. All right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see nothing on the screen, that's why I'm asking.
That'd be great, but I don't, there it is.
There it is.
I only see part of it.
I mean, they clearly, uh, deliberated for many weeks later to take a step and...
Could you make, uh, Mr. Garcia, could you make it so it shows all of them, all four?
Certainly, one moment.
Appreciate that.
How are we now?
There you go, thank you.
You got it.
And security risk, I believe. And what I thought, these shit, five hundred tons of Israel, shit fishes, is that what I have? Uh, that I have, three, there's millions of, uh, explosive oil, supposed to, it's all, yeah, on the, on the, on the, the, the Japanese, uh, discussions, obviously, it's, it's, this one, uh, we have it, that's...
Hey, Mr. Koloji, I have five twenty-nine.
Right. Mr. Clerk, would you please take the roll again?
Certainly. Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Harrison?
Present.
Mr. Michelle? Mr. Michelle? He was here.
Yeah.
Right there, yeah.
Present?
Right.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Wilkins? Ms. McBride? Okay, uh, Mr. Koloji, I do not, still do not have a quorum. The time now is five-thirty.
Uh, we were required to wait thirty minutes and take another quorum call, which we just did. There was no quorum. Consequently, we were unable to hold a meeting due to a lack of a quorum.
All right. In that case, everybody have a good weekend. I'm ending this meeting for all.
Hey, everyone, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to let you know that if you, I left some information about getting access and...